Waiting for my system to come up. Can we by chance take rid of that input? Thank you. Okay, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll go on the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for tonight's agenda. Having a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Okay, so our action item tonight is funding measures for the increased student enrollment. I just want to let the board members know that I do apologize. I did not realize I was supposed to entertain more discussion and call for another motion if there was one to be entertained. So this was, I do apologize for that. So this is why we're here tonight, because we do need to give a solution for what to do with the overcrowding and the monies that are needed to accommodate that because we can't obviously not address that. So with that being out there, the funding measure to increase student enrollment, we can have conversation, discussion about that. I don't know where we'd like to go with that.
Chairman Thompson, we had a suggestion from the district admin team.
Okay.
So we talked about it and we just thought that something that the board might consider using the S or $2 that we already have that we were going to do to bridge over with the plant facility levy. We'd like to put those projects on hold. We feel like right now the staffing is more important. If we could fill the staff, 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 then based on what CFO Wallace said about the increase in student enrollment and the PSF dollars being held back, the ADA hopefully increase or decrease depending where we are in protection. Then if we need to at the end of the year of the school year, then the board at that point, if we are got a cutback from the state or the ADA wasn't high enough or there's some plant facility needs that we could come back to the board at that point, but that we use the S or $2 right now for the staffing instead of taking it out of fund balance. Taking out of fund balance may affect our bond rating and with our growth, having to possibly look at a future bond or other things that we might need with that. We feel like the best thing for the district and the taxpayers would be to use the S or 2 funds now for the staffing needs and then go back to the fund balance. If needed, come back to the board and ask for that this spring after we know what our final ADA is going to be. So that's our recommendation.
Okay, with respect to that, what projects were the SR2 funds going to be taking care of?
Well, the plant facility levy is 1.146 million per year. So there's things all throughout. We've shared that spreadsheet with you before with the board and there's several items on there. So just putting those things on hold and saying what's the highest priority that we need to do. And we can certainly bring that back to the board to share it with you, but at this point, we feel like the staffing is the most important.
Oh, staffing is critical. I agree.
So exactly what would we be pretty on hold in terms of projects that we have? You said we received a list of them. Can you refer me to them?
Yeah.
Well, frankly, it's a little major. So we've been sort of in a pattern with the 1.1 million dollars of the plant facility fund. We've been doing a roof replacement each year. We've been doing parking lots each year. We're looking at doing siding for pathology to replace that because the exterior siding is aged.
Vehicle.
Been doing the gym floors. We've been doing carpeting projects. We've been doing.
Vehicle fleet.
Vehicle fleet. So I mean, we're trying to use the plant facility fund. It's not like new buildings is to do aggressive maintenance and to just keep our age buildings going. So if the plant facility fund is not going to be renewed after this year, that's $1 million worth of work that we just sort of do to keep that progress going, that we wouldn't have that resource. So possibly we're thinking some of the federal dollars could bridge that gap. A lot of budgeting ends up being an opportunity cost. You know, we can do anything, we can't do everything.
Sure.
And so if we are going to add this staffing, you know, which is a significant dollar, then.
Very important.
Then that's, you know, I would rather use the resource that we have available and if we have to defer some of those things, then that's what it is. And those long-term soda needs are not going to go away. But if the plant facility levy goes away, if you don't have S or dollars to do it, then we wouldn't have the resources to do anything. So it's all, you know, it's all sort of where we decide our priorities are going to be. And a lot of times those decisions aren't the easiest ones, right? Because you're like this, I'm like this, and sometimes you can't do both.
Sure.
So that's sort of our recommendation that if the staffing is the higher priority, then the things that are maybe just still a high priority but not quite as high might have to wait a little bit.
Sure. Let me make sure I understood what you said. You said these are just usually the routine maintenance, major, major things that need to be maintained over time. That there's not anything specifically that you have these dollars dog ear for other than major routine things that need to be done. And so this would be a great opportunity to use these funds rather than deplete the.
Well, right, so we.
You just didn't hear any specific things you had to dog ear for, which is okay. If you don't have those.
No, I can give you like a list that I think I shared with trustee Bain.
Well, we shared the whole list with the board. They have that.
That we went about two years out. I certainly not going to project what project we might do in three years if you don't have plant facility. So because it's just an exercise at that point. So I, but we did have the plant facility levy for this year and we know that some of those projects won't get finished. So we'll have some dollars left over that. We collect the property taxes all this year. So we'll have some dollars still in the fund starting next fiscal year just because of the timing of when we pay our bills. That will continue next year, but at some point, if that levy goes off and we're not collecting revenues, then the fund will be at zero.
Yes, that makes sense. All right.
I have a suggestion. If someone's speaking that's not up here, can you guys stand up here? So everybody, nobody, it's really hard to hear when we're having conversation with people that are seated and people that come back and watch the video don't know who's talking. That'd be great. Yeah, that Mr. Wallace was referring to the facilities upgrade and replacement schedule. Yeah, if you search a drive, it's actually.
This was something that he had. The capital outlay. It's a facility fund capital projects.
So it's not the deferred maintenance priority list?
It's something that just got sent to her.
Not just got sent.
Okay.
It was sent months ago when I requested it.
It was sent to her exclusively. Would it be possible to be the floor project? What was the document you were talking about?
The one I thought was the one that we had looked at before was the facilities upgrade and replacement, the schedules. All the different schools and when they went through and said this needs to be done, that needs to be done. And it sort of gave a timeline.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I remember looking at this one.
Yeah.
As well as the deferred maintenance. Okay.
That's probably just for you.
Yeah, but Wallace, will you share that PDF, the capital outlays one with the entire board for us?
So I have some questions for Mr. Wallace. Regarding the fund balance. I know that we pulled, you know, half a million, 400,000, whatever at a time and then I guess repleted that money. Would it be impossible to do the same if we took some of the money out of the fund balance with the funds that may come through or expected to come through? If we use some of that to meet these needs? And then I guess my other question, I went back to look. Are we still about 5.1 million in the unassigned fund balance?
Right.
Okay.
We'll probably end this year around $6 million for our fund balance. Now, it's important to understand that the fund balance is not sitting in a separate bank account all by itself. It's just sort of part of our operating expenses. And at the end of the year, did you have money in the bank or career? You have to borrow to make up a debt.
Right.
So yes, districts often through year have different years where they add the fund balance because, you know, mortgage came on, some years where they, they declined. They need to find out so that that is not a comment. What you want to avoid as a best practice is if you. Lakeland was there several years ago for a lot of reasons, but and Corin was there. If you build a budget eventually that consistently, you're, you know that your expenditures are going to go into revenues. It's just not sustainable. Can you sustain it for a few years? Yes. But at some point, you run out of your savings account. So really, as we build our budgets, we try to avoid building up ongoing expenditures more than what our revenues can handle.
Right.
So that is my concern of adding a significant amount of FTE, 13 FTEs. Nothing is easy. That's the cost. That now that's a staffing level that we are now sort of saying this is our program to maintain that staffing surplus every year. So every year, you're going to have to have revenues enough to cover that and other expenses will come up. And that is a concern because you're sort of now building a budget that we can't afford over time. And so there's a lot of factors we go that that's would be my concern is that we sort of now have the staffing up. So at some point, if you're there, you end up having to now make a hard decision later down, you know, like four years down the road of, okay, we have too much staff. We have to cut. We have to change the program, you know, or maybe there will be a program change. We're not going to do as much extra curricular. We're not going to do as much maintenance. We're not going to cost as much. I mean, there's a lot of ways that you can reduce funds, but if your revenues consistently are not as much as your expenditures, you have to address that as an organization.
Right, absolutely. And I agree with that. But what you're explaining to me is that there's never a way to get out of the hole then. Because what you're telling me is that if we take this money, it's just this continual hole. And even though we're using it for one time, the next year when we do the budget and we understand now that we have nearly 5,000 students in the district, that the budget will never keep up with it. So how will we ever get out of the hole then? If it, if we just, if we can't do it now, you see what I'm saying? I mean, it's.
Well, no, I didn't say that. I said that certainly districts, I just said that sometimes you have years where you dip into your fund box and you know you spend more. And that happens. And sometimes you add. But what we generally don't want to do is literally have built a budget of costs that you know that our revenues aren't going to be able to cover.
Right.
So where Lakeland was before Dr. Meyer got here, we were in a spot where our expenditures for several years in a row, five, six, were higher than our revenues. The revenues are not going to come from the state. So eventually, the board of the time voted to go for a higher levy to make up that gap. Part of that gap was, I mean, there's a big history to some of that. There's a history where teacher salaries were frozen for like five years.
Right.
Frozen.
Yep.
Okay. So when we went down to minus 12,000, we unwinding that, which is the right thing to do for the teachers, was the killer for this budget because we did not have the revenues to cover that cost. But that decision was made and it was the right one, but not fiscal. There's two different things when you start looking at these decisions. There's finance, my perspective, finance director. I'm not making a program decision. That's for Dr. Meyer and Ward and Dr. Pasley. I'm just trying to be the fact finder, telling you, here's the facts.
Right.
So if right now, given our anticipated revenues for the year, if with our 9.51 dollar levy and what we think we're going to get from state with upcoming budget cuts when they happen, we add these 13 staff, we're likely to run into red for the year. Can we absorb that? Yes, we have a good fund balance. However, now you now have this budget that since staffing is tied to it and those positions continue. It's not like building a roof, but now I'm fixed for 20 years. And now those 13 staff members, they get raises next year. They, health insurance goes up. I mean, we continue that cost, an ongoing cost. We're not going to say we're hiring those 13 people and next year they don't have a job. So that's what I mean by an ongoing cost.
Right, I get the ongoing cost. It just sounds like there's a hole that you can't get out of no matter what we do.
Correct. Well, the hole is our state, the state is not funding education the level we need. Our levy probably isn't high enough to afford that. So I don't have the revenues to cover that additional cost. Maybe some things will come through. Maybe the legislature will let us do enrollment instead of attendance. Maybe some of these other cuts that they've talked about will not happen. Maybe they'll do some things in January. They've done it in the past that helped us out. Those are a lot of unknowns. But what I know today, which will be different than what I know next July, is that right now we're sort of building a budget that is exceeding our anticipated revenues. We can do that for a year or two. We can't do that forever. That's all I'm saying.
Right. So can we amend the budget and change knowing now what we know? Can the budget be amended to change?
Sure, the budget can be amended, but that's just, we're changing my projection. That's not going to change actuals. I can certainly say, yes, I think we'll get $2 million from the state and everything's going to be fine.
Well, I meant the funding units that go to the state now that we, you know, underestimate all this.
Our funding units will be what they are. We'll know more in February, but funding units aren't on budget. Funding units aren't what we actually earn by our attendance.
Right. And now we know that's different.
Well, I know it's different for three days.
Yeah.
I know. And I know that we don't know what our attendance is going to be rate for the next 10, 11 weeks. If attendance is, holds up at a traditional 95%, then that will be good. But last year, you know, we were at 100% with enrollment. There was no attendance drop. So as from a dollar perspective, 95% of just from calculating earnings, that those 4,700 kids are worth about almost like 4,400 last year because of the attendance drop. Our enrollment is usually. When it was 46, our ADA, our average daily attendance was probably around 43, 42, 50. So if we're at 47, our average day attendance is maybe about 4,400. So we're earning about the same units as last year, likely. That, I mean, that because of the tennis head. If they changed the enrollment rule, that would be helpful for us. I don't know if that'll happen. So I'm just saying with the projections on the current funding formula, yeah, the extra kids are there. We're going to probably earn more units than budget. So cut into some of the gap, but it's not going to make up all that difference.
The 1.4 million if we went for the whole projected.
Right. I don't think that we, those extra ADA is going to make up that gap.
Right, right, right. Yeah, that's quite much.
Trustee Kristen?
Yes.
I think part of the issue is what's difficult is we are, we are playing catch up because we don't know until the first Friday of November what that ADA. We don't even know if the state board, because of what I've told you, Chairman Thompson, they went to ADA, then back to enrollment. And now they're saying, well, they don't know for sure.
Right.
So we're not going to know till mid-year. They say they're holding back the PSF dollars, which our district, Brian, said is $600,000. But that's an if still. I mean, it says right now we don't get it, but could they give it to us? Then figuring out till February, when he's talking about our salary units, that in February, where we have our SBA, salary-based apportionment, plus our ADA, which is the average daily attendance of students, all of that combined around in February, we finally get to figure out what our enrollment, what our funding for revenue for this current year is. So it's like we're playing catch up and trying to project. Nobody has a crystal ball. That's why I'm saying our, I, we feel like our best move forward, and again, it's the board's decision, but we're just saying our best move is to use our S or $2 right now and use that for staffing, which is the immediate need for the classrooms. And then the other projects that may happen, we can keep the board updated every single meeting. If this is what's going on with PSF, with ADA, we can do all of those every time for the board meetings. So you guys, every single two weeks are kept up to date until we get through the year. And then we can make a decision at that point. Is there any projects we need to do that we need to pull from fund balance or to put money back in? But that way, we don't have to mess with the fund balance unless we need to in the spring. That's our recommendation based on all of that.
3.2 million, 3.27.
It was three.
I wasn't sure.
No.
Couple hundred thousand. That was started last year, but now.
Thought we used a little bit.
Yeah.
Respectfully, with what you're asking, are you asking to use the SR funds for the 1.4 million or just for the approximate 1 million for the?
Yes.
Teachers?
Just for what trustee Bain, that middle ground that she talked about? That's what we're asking for.
So then in doing that, we wouldn't be looking at a noon duty or a volleyball coach or five and a half teachers for their prep? We wouldn't be looking at any of that?
No, we would be able to cover those pieces. We'll be able to cover those.
Okay, then you've lost me. So.
I don't have the thing right in front of me, but we figured it out today, what we'd be able to cover. There's a few things on the list that we wouldn't be able to cover, but the very top priorities we'd be able to cover. And we covered them all today. The staffing pieces that we talked about today.
Okay, would we be able to cover the curriculum, furniture and materials?
Not all of that.
That's a little concerning. If we can't get the curriculum or the furniture.
Well, Dr. Pasley's working on getting some of that in gratis. We're also, there also is ability for some teachers to share. We have come up with a plan so everybody will be covered, but starting with the staffing is the most important, we feel.
I agree.
Yeah. And we also could use, Chairman Thompson, we also have some Chromebooks that are extra Chromebooks that we can give to teachers right now and then fill those, because when they break down, the tech had a reserve. We can use those and we wouldn't have reserve right now. So those, the reserve, we would have to have a smaller reserve than they were.
And on the tech side, we did apply for an extra grant. We have approval, we're hoping to hit that, that could help the first some of the Chromebooks we already purchased. So if that came through, that would help. There's some of these pieces that when Dr. Meyer was saying, you know, maybe find it in other ways where, you know, I told her, I don't want to guarantee it because until you get it.
Yeah, you don't know what you have until you have it.
Good chance we're going to qualify for that after the ERA program. They're going through the routing process now. So hopefully we won't have anything upstairs. So.
Well, and keep in mind that there, that the Chromebooks that were budgeted in this plan was 377 Chromebooks at $350 a piece. But if our, if our budget was 4,500 students and we only, so that's only a difference in 218 over. So that would make, you know, we wouldn't actually be spending $131,000 on Chromebooks. It would only be 350 times the 218 instead of 350 times 377. So that, that amount would be less too based on.
Right.
Based on looking at the difference in what was budgeted and what was actually, what we act, the actual enrollment.
Right.
I would rather just find the funds for the whole one point four two seven million. And the reason I say that is because I still think that there could be somewhat of a burden. And in respect to the Chromebooks, which trustee Bain is probably correct, but we know that there's a, a limit, right? We already seen that. Every so often, we have a breakdown or something happens, somebody damages. I mean, so it's nice to say, well, you know, that won't happen. But I personally would rather look at the whole number and do that. I also want to point out that just as a matter of record, I suppose, that we need to do something with our policy 7050 regarding the fund balance, which is what Dr. Meyer had referred to before when we talked about the 8.3% and not more than 16.6%. It references Idaho Code 33801A and we actually need to remove that because our quote fund balance, the unappropriated funds, is not the contingency reserve fund as stated in statute. And I think we, Mr. Wallace and I had this discussion way early on. And part of it is because we don't show it that way on our budget. And the other part being by statute, it cannot exceed 5% of the budget. So we need to fix this because the two don't go together. Where the code being records does not apply. It's just, it's misappropriated. I mean, if we want to keep it, the board so desires to keep the policy at the 8.3%. That's fine. And by the way, the 1.4 million from the 5.1 would still leave the fund balance above the 8.3%, which is the bottom threshold according to the policy. So whatever the board decides to do, either way, we would stay within the policy. We'd stay within the money. I understand what Mr. Wallace is saying and I don't have any problem with taking the S or $2 or whatever and using it, knowing that we have the, we can always go back to the fund balance to fix what we need to fix. We still have a huge hurdle with the ARPSR funds also, which is in totality 5.9 million. It's dispersed in three rounds or two rounds, I'm sorry. And the dispersment, you know, the way it's broken out, I think the first dispersment is 3.1 or 3.9 and then there's a 1. something afterward. So there's always that money too, once we decide what we're going to do there. I feel bad that the staff didn't understand that the board was not saying, no, we don't care that you need the money or you have this issue. or you have this issue. Because that was not my point in voting the way I voted. I, I would never do that to the staff and the students, but it's hard to balance both roads at the same time. And I just felt like the district could find the money in other places, which obviously we've done. But I would still say that we use the 1.427, if this 780,000, if Mr. Wallace believes that the availability of that amount is in those SRR 2 funds.
The SRR 2 funds, we have, the grant is 2.6 million, we spent 256,000, we have 2.35, effectively left right now. There's some cost coming through. So that's SRR 2.
Okay.
SRR 3, which we have not, there's still things to happen there, but that grant is $3.1 million of discretionary, which they mean by that, it's just for the general SRR uses of that grant, and then 779,000, so 780 for, has to be directed directly towards learning loss. So our SRR $3 are, are not over 5, they're free 20.
Yep, well, but there's two dispersments of that, so the, the, what was the first date, the 5/25/2021, which they missed, no later than the NLT date, was 5/21/2021. That was the first disbursement, but if you look at the State Department of Education, they have a total allotment. I don't know when the second one is, there's no NLT for that. But anyways, we can...
We can work that, all I know, I'm going right at the grant, what we've been awarded and ineligible to claim.
Yeah.
SRR 3 right now is a total of 3.1.
Yeah, okay.
3.1?
3, yeah, 3.1 for discretionary, and another 780,000 for learning loss, so SRR 3 right, right now.
She just brought up your presentation that you did to the board, she just found it.
Yep.
So at least that's what we have right now.
Okay, so, Dr. Meyer, with the SRR 2 funds that we were talking about, the 2 point whatever million Mr. Wallace just talked about, was there something in those funds that you find might be prohibitive of using the 1.427? The whole figure that we looked at?
Right.
For...
No, because it falls under that 15 allowable expenses.
Okay.
And so we talked today about how, Mr. Wallace, we can allocate our increase in custodians, we can increase in staffing is helping with social distancing, dispersing kits farther, we feel like we can...
Like we're killing the furniture, the building, all of that stuff to be able to people once from now on a little bit.
Yeah, it did fall in with them, the guidelines for all.
Right, for the SRR 2.
Yeah.
The SRR 3 gets a little bit more restrictive with the learning loss.
So if we took the full amount from those SRR funds, you don't see any negative, necessarily immediate negative effect that we couldn't, okay?
No, and then the thing that I would want to promise the board is to come back to the discussion of,
Yes.
This is how much we've used, these are the, for the plant facility levy, to Trustee Major's point, this was the 1.146, what we were planning on doing, we come back around to see, did the PSEF dollars happen? What was our ADA, what was our SBA, and, which I defined earlier?
Yeah.
What, and then coming back to the board and saying, this is where we are in the spring, so do we need to take anything out of fund balance based on that at that time? We'll have way more particulars figured out, and I think the board will be able to make a better decision at that point on the fund balance.
And what were the, the dates that the board would have to meet if they did want to put the plant facility levy back out to the constituents, to the district?
Well, it depends on what sort of campaign you want to run, as far as like, when I met with you guys prior to the summer, and I said, we need to know if we're going to do a plant facility levy in March, we need to get a group together, we need to do... We've kind of already prepped past that time. We certainly could start back up and combine the strategic plan, with the long-range plan, with the plant facility, and get that group all going together, so that it all intermixes together to say, okay, when are we going to run this that's best for the community altogether? And I, I don't think our team feels like March is the best date. I think we need more time with the community, there's, as you know, there's a lot at Garwood itself, 35, he told us, 35% new families at Garwood this year.
Right.
So I think we need some time to educate and get the word out. If we didn't do March, we could, the board could consider May, the board could consider August or next November.
Okay.
Not some bolts, just for timing, you know, when you run a March election, you have the effect that we have the ballot language to the county by the end of January. So the decision has to be made in January to get the language, because then it goes on the ballot. In the May ballot, it's sort of the same thing, you have to have that information to the county in March, after the March election, but not too much thereafter, it's about timings. For the August election, again, it's, you know, end of June or so to have that. And then if we did not make the August election, then it would drop off for a year, because we certify our L2 for property taxes right now in September, so without an election, if you ran it next November, well, it's dropped off for a year. If you, doesn't mean you can't go back, but that, that would be, November would be for the next year.
The next year, okay.
Would it be possible for us to put on a future agenda to discuss?
Yeah.
Did you, I think, did you guys already put it on for the next board agenda?
Well, just making note, at our next, at our next meeting, we can bring the... Thank you, Mr. Wallace, I don't have anything else, somebody else might, but I, thank you very much. So I think my recommendation would be to take Dr. Meyer's recommendation and Mr. Wallace's recommendation that way we don't have to touch the fund balance right now. I, I think that's a great recommendation, and then that gives us some time to look at what's coming down the road and be more prepared, or maybe, not that we're not prepared, but you know what I'm saying? Gives us time to look at things and try and get things out to the public for future. Yep, so that would, I'm, I'm fine with that, I don't know if we need more discussion, but I have nothing further, Madam Chair.
Okay, so then, with that conversation though, I just, I, with your recommendation, Dr. Meyer, can we have some sort of an assurance that what was presented to the board, this 1.4 million, that this, that the district actually looked at, analyzed, and thought, because it was presented, you know, what's the bare minimum you can get through this year with? I would like to give them the 1.4. So I, I really, I don't want to just, you know, hammer it down even farther because of how they, how the staff came to this number, given that, you know, we could ask for 2 million, but, you know, being conservative, this is where we went. I don't want to just make the mistake of saying, okay, we'll just do what we can. I would really like it to be defined with the fact that they came up with a plan of action, and I believe every board member on here has, is supporting this plan of action.
Absolutely.
So I want to make sure that the 1.4 is, is concreted.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Okay. Any further conversation? Okay, then I will pull up the other agenda, because I don't know what I'm supposed to say. I'll entertain a motion on regard, with regard to funding for the... Can we lift that up? Because I can't get back to it.
If the board gives us permission to use the SRR 2 funds for what was presented, that would be great.
Oops, now I'm in the wrong meeting. So yes, I'll entertain a motion on the funding measures to increase, to in, what does that say?
For, for...
For, okay.
It's Shannon over there, so she can't...
Increase student enrollment.
I will move to approve the recommendation for the funding measure for the increased student enrollment to use the SRR 2 funds, and rely on the fund balance should it be needed for the repairs. On the SRR 2 funds in the amount as presented in the plan of action, 1,427,000 dollars, or 427,780 dollars.
How's that make that?
Hearing a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. That concludes our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you for finding the money, I appreciate it.
Thank you.